Roll call, please. Now call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Grumeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Alman?
Here.
Mayor Protem Newton?
I'm here.
Mayor Bash?
Yes.
All present, thank you.
Pleasure of allegiance, please. Mayor Protem Newton.
Thank you, Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's been requested that we're going to do a reversal in this meeting. We're going to switch 2A for 2B. We'll do the splash pad discussion if council is amenable to that since the folks doing the ADA issue are here. Is that okay there, everybody?
Yes.
Swap them? Okay. We'll begin, though, with public comments. This is the time when persons wishing to address the presiding governmental body regarding matters not on the agenda may be heard. Please submit a speaker card to the meeting clerk. That's Dana right over there. Please limit comments to three minutes or less. The Ralph M. Brown Act limits the governmental body's ability to respond to comments on non-agendized matters at the time such comments are made. The governmental body shall not discuss or act relative to any general public comment. Are there any public comments?
I have no speaker cards, Mayor.
All right. Closing public comments. Moving on to discussion action items. Number two, order of presentation for discussion items. One, staff report presentation. Two, council questions of staff. Three, public comment. Four, council discussion in action. Again, we're going to switch 2A with 2B. So we're moving to 2B. Discussion regarding self-evaluation and transition plan for programs and services regarding compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act. Deputy City Manager, Petrie.
Thank you. Michelle, if you can, is going to do an introduction of our consulting team and a quick little presentation.
Good afternoon, Mayor, and members of city council. One of the purposes of the city council meeting public workshop today is to have city council receive presentation from Miller Architectural Corporation and their consultant team regarding the city's self-evaluation and transition plan regarding compliance with Americans with Disabilities Act. The workshop is an open discussion and will provide information for remedies and for the future capital and programming process. The workshop will allow the consultant to hear from city council as well as take public comments. At this time, I'd like to turn over the presentation to Gary Miller, president of Miller Architectural Corporation and his consultants.
It's really nice to see you again. You realize we've been banging around together for a very long time. You too. Goodness gracious.
... in one capacity or another. So we're grateful to be here. And purpose is to explain the evaluation that we have been doing and the recommendations we are making to help keep the city in compliance with the American with Disabilities Act. As part of our design and consulting team is our firm, Miller Architectural Corporation. And I'll explain the roles of each in a moment. Izor and Associates is a California certified accessibility specialist, and they are helping with the physical accessibility issues. And David Sanfilippo is helping with program compliance and services compliance. So with respect to ADA, the American with Disabilities Act requires that all public agencies and businesses that are open to the public make facilities accessible and services accessible to the public at large. Also, programs. They also recognize, or the act recognizes, that most businesses and many cities are not in a position to immediately bring every facility they have throughout the city into compliance. So there is a means by which we can accomplish that, and that is these evaluation and transition plans, which we have conducted and present to you tonight. This requires that agencies and businesses evaluate their facilities, establish a plan to make those facilities compliant, as well as their services and programs. They must document that process and then follow through. The roles that each member of this consulting team have played are listed as you see there. Our role as the architect component is to evaluate the impact on the buildings and the sites of how to bring these, each of your facilities into compliance with the American with Disabilities Act, estimate what the cost will be, and make recommendations about priorities and schedule. Izor and Associates does the actual surveys of your facilities, identifies deficiencies, and makes remediation recommendations of the physical components. And then David Sanfilippo evaluates city programs, everything from dance programs, recreation programs, to employment environments, and down to the city website. All of that falls under the American with Disabilities Act consideration. This is just a section taken, or a summary taken, from the American with Disabilities Act and explains what this transition plan is all about. And that's pretty much what I've said already. And there are four principles involved. Policy and operations, and that means we make reasonable modifications and accommodations to activities, practices, and policies, programs, services, and facilities. Communication, ensure that we communicate with those with certain disabilities and include them. Third, integration, offer services that integrate the setting appropriate to allow people to have their needs met. And physical access, which I think everyone pretty well has a handle on what that's about. So the architectural component, and I think I should pause at this point. I got a little bit ahead of myself and introduced the team that's behind and to my left. To my far left is Kathy Oswald. If you'd raise your hand, Kathy. Kathy has, she's, was the very first employee our firm hired, and she's managed to stay with me in spite of me. So you have the very best we have in her role as the architectural component. And to my immediate left is Greg Izor, and following him is David. So each will have their presentation. As far as our firm's background, we thought those who may not be familiar with this, you might like a little bit of background with us. I've mentioned our 15-year history with the city. We specialize in renovation work and American with disability remediation work. So we think that may have been a contributing factor in why we were selected in the selection process. This is an example of the report that has been prepared. That big binder has, I think it's around 50 or so of these reports, one for each of your facilities. And the purpose of the report is first to identify the item. Then, as you move to the right on that screen, there's some photographs of what this circumstance is so that you can imagine what it's about. Next is the method that is recommended to bring any non-compliant element into compliance. The schedule is something we want to talk about tonight, so that is not yet filled in. And that's something that the city may want to do at your own pace, but we make recommendations. And then finally, the cost for each of these components. I only mention this because what often happens in renovation work, it's like dominoes. As soon as you touch one part of your building, it might trigger a few other things. And this is just one simple example that we show you. So to kind of explain that domino effect, this was a building renovation. The program called to replace the suspended ceiling, same kind of ceiling as we have in this room. And we took the initiative to push up the ceiling tiles to see what was behind there. And the first thing we noticed was all of the electrical conduit was just laying on top of the grid. And when that ceiling comes down, all of the electrical conduit comes down with it. So that's the architect's role, is to make sure that, okay, we're going to move a toilet, but what's that toilet connected to? Secondly, we noticed that there was asbestos-containing spray material on that metal deck. So that had to be mitigated or remediated. And the third item is the upper-left picture. You see about a four-inch valve wheel there. That was in a closet that was going to become a hallway. That valve turned off the water supply for the entire building. So here again, had we not noticed that prior to preparing construction documents, we know the contractor would have noticed it, and they would have approached this client for an additional service. So our purpose is to identify those kinds of things along with the actual ADA issues. So, and then here again, just another cost estimate or example of what your report will be like. And the costs are today's values, which is a moving target at the moment. But we do give you a schedule so you can make some informed decisions. This is the example of the cost estimate formula. Print's a little small, but each element is broken down. There's an element for the site. There's an element for, for what we call the path of travel to get into the building. There's assessment of what's inside the building, once you're there, like a countertop that may not be accessible. There's an assessment of restroom accessibility, drinking fountains, and every component that needs to be utilized by both able and disabled individuals. Then we classify them by these letters. So with that, I, with your permission, I'll give the microphone to Greg, and you can talk about yours.
Pleasure being here. If you have any questions as we're going through this, excuse me, feel free to ask. This is the hard copy that we produced of all of our reports. So basically, we were tasked with going to every one of your buildings and parks and facilities and evaluating them to see what, if any, barriers to the disabled. Now, one thing that you want to keep in mind, a lot of people, when you say ADA, they think of people in wheelchairs. It's also visually impaired and hearing impaired individuals. So we evaluate that, all those three different disabilities. When we go out, let me go to the next slide. So here's kind of an identification of the self-evaluation that we do. We identify the physical barriers. We did not review the city's programs and activities. That's Dave Sanfilippo. And then we make reports available for public review and opportunity for public comment. The transition plan has not been completed yet. The transition plan is when there are dates on the report. And basically, that meets your obligation as a public entity to evaluate the situation in your city and then have a plan to mitigate those measures. That's the transition plan. So the transition plan will be based on the pricing, your ability as a city to afford the different upgrades, et cetera. So what we're presenting today is just, we're explaining to you what the self-evaluation and the transition plan is. The transition plan has not been completed yet. I come with a lot of qualifications. I've been an architect in California since 1981. I've, also, I'm a disabled veteran business enterprise. I worked at the Division of the State Architect and Access Compliance for two years. I was one of the first CASP certified access specialists in the state. That was in, and I've been, my firm doesn't do plans anymore, is what I say. We just do ADA compliance. We do training. We do expert witness, and we evaluate new buildings and existing buildings. In your case, we went out and evaluated your existing buildings. And our activities on the site were not unlike, a building inspector would go out and do just about the same thing that we would do, except we're not checking mechanical, electrical, structural, et cetera. We use smart levels. We have cameras with us. We have notes. Miller and Associates provided us with floor plans when there were buildings so that we could make sure we were covering everything. And so we went out, and I had a team of up to four people, and we went out over several weeks to do the evaluations. We did a lot of coordination with your department heads to make sure that we were showing up at convenient times when the facilities weren't, you know, being used, et cetera. And then we went back to our office and began the tedious work of putting everything into the report. If we spent an hour on the site, it's going to take us four hours to put that into a report. So all the hours we spent on-site doing the inspection, just multiply that times four, and we put them into the reports. Any questions so far? Okay. Again, the evaluation, I'm just going to skip over that because you've got the reports. You can take a look at the format. We really pride ourselves in doing a very simple, to-the-point report that a lot of these items could be mitigated by your maintenance staff. It's that simple. We don't do plans. However, at the end of the report, if you look at the report, you'll notice that the report identifies appendices. So in the very back of the report, we have these diagrams. So if a guy's going to restripe a parking space, he can go there and take a look at what the dimensions are. And we didn't attach that appendancy to every report because this notebook would be twice as thick. So we just like to cut to the chase. We've had several clients, notwithstanding the County of Riverside, that actually had us come back in and redo an ADA evaluation report that they had done previously by another consultant that they couldn't understand and couldn't read. So I think if you talk to your department heads that have looked at this, you'll find that the report is pretty simple and easy to read. So that's the way we approach it. And here's a good example of it. And what I wanted to do is highlight, our report, we put this column in there that says "schedule." When there's dates in there, or they're linked to phases of mitigation measure, that completes it, and it becomes a transition plan. You'll notice in the heading up there, and this is a little pointer, yeah. So if you notice right in here, "to be determined," the date of the final report, okay? Date of adoption, "to be determined." For it to be final, you will adopt it, and you will officially adopt it with the, to make it a transition plan. So that's how we've made it pretty simple. We've done this before for school districts and other public agencies. And so that's what creates the final report and the transition plan. Again, we noted different things, pictures, here's how do you correct it, et cetera. And then we like to do a site plan where these numbers, like, B4 is this item right here, which is your parking space out there. And what happened? So need a little paint and some signs, and you're good to go out there. Any questions so far? Yes? This question may be premature, but looking at policies, procedures, and what we could do better in the future? Do you want me to hold on that and let you finish through? That'll be Dave, because he evaluated that. We just did the physical environment, and he has taken care of all of those policies and procedures, which is part of it. You know, some people think ADA compliance is just for wheelchairs. No, it goes beyond that. And then, I'm sorry, this was an example of the appendices that are part of the report. So I believe this is where, David, you pick up, and this is the guy you're going to ask that question of. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. It's been a pleasure, actually, to work with the staff, the managers of this fine city. I'm always impressed by people who have a heart for what this is, because I have. I worked for 50 years in this field. I have worked, I worked at Long Beach State for 40 years as the director of Disabled Student Services. I also have done a few of these kinds of self-evaluations. First, for my own university. I've done it for several other universities, San Diego State, and also I did it at CSU Northridge, and for a couple of other cities, Long Beach being one of them. So that's a little bit about me. I've done a few other things, too. First, just understanding what we're doing on the program and services side is to, first of all, work with staff and building a basic knowledge of ADA. Now, we know that, and I don't want to insult anybody's intelligence, you probably, most of you know about ADA. But it's appropriate, I think, to understand not only the letter of the law, but the spirit of the law as well. So we try to work on that. We build appropriate skills for people to interact with people with disabilities because programs, services, and activities deal with the human element. Greg and the architects dealt with issues involving physical issues. They involve people because people have to access buildings, or get into classrooms, or get into program areas. But we really were working with people directly a lot in the services component, and the activities component especially. So what we did in the self-evaluation was to assess what the requirement was in the law, what my findings were, based on a couple of things that we did, and I'll share that in a second, and then recommend, you know, what we thought might be good ways to remediate those. And then the last two things that I think are most important is to look at what's the next step for the city in terms of making, doing the transition plan? How do you make this happen? You can have, you know, we both have big binders. My binder. We didn't get paid by weight. Somebody thinks, might think we got paid by the weight of our reports, but that's not the case. As Greg said, for every hour we spent here, we probably spent three or four hours working on this report. But anyway, to give good recommendations for the future. So one of the things we did with staff was to do some training, too. And so we put everybody, including Brian, and Michelle, and a few other people in the room here, we put them through some training. And one of the things I asked people to do, because, again, I'm thinking about peoples. I work with people directly at the university, working with faculty. Can you imagine trying to work with faculty to get them to understand how they had to change their classroom? Not an easy thing to do sometimes, but... What's that? Yes, many of them were. No matter how brilliant they might have been in their field, they had some learning, they had a learning curve. So we asked people first, like, which one of these disabilities? So I'll ask you, which one of these disabilities would you choose if you had to choose a disability? Which one would you choose to have? Be it deaf, learning disability, and let's say you were dyslexic, use a wheelchair, developmentally delayed, or...
(inaudible).
Oh, yeah. Really? Oh, good. But you know what? The faculty can also be really great advocates for us as well, and they often were, and were part of our plan for the future for our university. Psychological disabilities and blind. So, and then I asked them to choose which one they would least like to have. So I'll ask, I'll go down, the council asks, which one of these would you least like to have? I'll start with Greg.
I'm sure, being on city council, that we probably have a psychological disability to begin with. So you're asking...
I wasn't going to make any assumptions at all.
My first, if I had to make a choice, my first choice?
The first choice in which you would not want.
Which I would not want?
Yes.
Probably wheelchair.
Okay. Catherine?
This question makes me a little uncomfortable.
That's okay. It's to do that.
I would pick blindness.
Okay.
Yeah, I would pick blindness, too.
Rob?
Wheelchair.
And Ted?
My wife's in a wheelchair. I don't want to ever see that happen to anybody. I work with development delayed persons. I know the struggles with them. Psychological disability, I lost her brother-in-law to PTSD. So all those are severe.
Yes.
I'll give you two. Deaf and blind are only senses. Your other senses will take over. So you can get away with those. So that's, I'll tell you those. I would not like any of those.
Deaf or blind.
Remember, I would not like to have a use of wheelchair and developing disabled and psychological disability. My other senses, I'll go back to the other one, which one I can live with? I can live with being deaf and blind, because your other senses will take over.
Which one would be the most difficult for you, then?
Have already have in sight? I would think death would be the most difficult.
Okay. So I had each of the folks, the managers, superintendents, city managers, assistant city managers, I asked them that same question. And then I said to them, so now, since people with disabilities don't get to choose their disability, you don't get to choose yours. So you have to take the one that would be most difficult for you for the rest of this training that we did. And they had to adopt that and have that perspective as we began to look at, how would you attend meetings? How would you get communicated to about services? Like, if you went up to a counter and you were blind or deaf, how would you deal with that? So that's the character they had to do. And the reason I did that was for perspective. And I can tell you hundreds of stories that I had about some students who got perspective, especially for students that became disabled. And so you're going to have both in your city. You could have student, you could have individuals who have been disabled from birth. You could have individuals who have become disabled. So the American Disability Act is really a civil rights law that prohibits discrimination on disability. That's the basic. That's just the basic of it. And how do you avoid discrimination? Well, there's several things, using common sense. For example, you don't hold meetings in inaccessible locations. Like, we talked about this, and I hate to keep using this one example, but we know there's a dance studio on the second floor of the gym. And you wouldn't want to have a meeting there because there's only, the only way you can get up there is through stairs. So people who may be in a wheelchair might have difficulty doing that. So that's common sense. And by the way, you guys don't do that at all. We found that those kinds of things weren't happening to the city. You need to be inclusive. You need to include citizens in the decision-making process. And one of the things that I strove to really work with, again, the city staff on, was is being a forethought rather than an afterthought. A lot of times for people with disabilities, it's always an afterthought. Oh, we didn't think that we would have a deaf individual attend this, the mayor's, the mayor's state of the city. Yeah. We didn't know that. But what do you do about that? Is it a forethought or an afterthought? So making it a forethought for people with disabilities is what we're really trying to get at. That's the point we're really trying to get at when we look at programs, services, and activities. And then you make the necessary accommodations, and we'll talk about that a little bit throughout. So we looked at everything. Not everything, but we tried to look at everything in terms of programs, services, activities, events. Obviously, Greg looked at the specific facilities. We also looked at policies, practices, and procedures, because those are things, they're not always the answer, but they help provide some structure. If you have to, if somebody comes to your counter, for example, and says, "I'm blind, and I need some help filling out these forms, how can you help me?" When we do. So we explore that with staff and what you do. So here's what we did to come up with this report, is we sent out about a 10-page survey, and it was a pretty extensive survey. and it was a pretty extensive survey, right, Brian? But everybody, we had over 22 respondents, key, again, key managers, directors, supervisors, program staff, and administrators responded to that. Andy, who's the city manager, who you all know, made a comment to me and said, it's interesting to know what we don't know because there were some things I thought I knew, but I didn't know. So I thought, that's good, because I never fault people for not knowing. Because some people just, you know, you just don't know. You don't know what you don't know. So part of that is to educate. Part of it is to bring up questions that tease that out a little bit. So that's what we did. And then we went back, I went back and interviewed 22 key staff people and got, further went into depth about the survey, using the survey, using questions they had, using concerns they may have had with their programs, services, or activities. And then I visited some sites, again, to make sure that the site, program, in and of itself, I didn't want to duplicate what Greg had already done, but really just to look at the site in terms of how it might create a barrier, might create something that might be difficult for a person to access. So we did that. We went to the senior center and we went to the gym, we went to a number of other places. I think we went to Ingalls, too. And then we did, we did training. We've done training for the managers, directors, supervisors. We did a little bit of training last week for the Parks and Recreation Commission. I just wanted to compliment the city, first of all, on some of its programs and services. Your senior programs here are amazing. They provide some services that cities with five times the size of this city don't even consider. To be congratulated, and party partners is really, it's really a special program. And I'll talk about that for a second. But the accessible transportation you provide, the mental health opportunities, I believe any of the programs and services that Parks and Recreation do provide great mental health. And boy, do we need it more than ever right now after COVID. Although these programs are not mandated by ADA, it demonstrates the city's commitment to and understanding of some of the unique needs of citizens with disabilities. So you could, to be commended for that. I just really think it's noteworthy, so I mentioned it. So what do we look at? We looked at all of these areas, which are all part of ADA Title II compliance issues. So public notice, having an ADA coordinator, a grievance process so people can say if there's problems out there. Public meetings, how do you hold your public meetings? How do you make sure that you include people with certain disabilities in those meetings? For, for an example, and again, you guys didn't know, but you know, maybe next time we'll consider those kinds of things. Like, if you're going to push this out virtually, which many city councils had to do because of COVID, consider those people who are deaf, those people who may need other ways of getting that information as you push that out. How do you remotely caption the city council meetings so that all your citizens can have access to it? It's a small example, but it's something that we will look at. And we talk extensively in each of these areas of the requirements, the findings, and then the recommendations. Again, all these areas, we'll talk about a couple of them specifically so you can get an idea. Once the plan, the transition plan is done, it should be available to the public, and it should be available to the public in many different formats. And I've recommended, again, you may have different processes you need to go through to make this happen, but I recommend that it be in Burell, large print, electronic, audio. And that should be held somewhere in the city clerk's office when the, when the transition plan is finally done. Again, we looked at requirements, find these recommendations. So this is an example of like one of the areas. So the ADA coordinator. So the first part you'll see talks about what the code, the federal code requires that they're to have, you are to have an ADA coordinator. That person is to be identified, name, address, telephone, what we found to be true with the city, and then what recommendations we're making in terms of that area. This is one of the areas, by the way, that I think needs to be high on your priority list for consideration because if you're going to make sure the transition plan works, you have to have somebody in charge. You have to have somebody who's going to make sure all this stuff is implemented. And, yeah. So the website is the new access point for people with disabilities because of what the cities do. And I understand today you launched their new website, Matt? That's correct? And congratulations for that. I highly recommend that you get end users to dynamically try that website out to see if there's, because we used to do that at our university, we would have our students, who are blind usually, go on the website. Or we would have the developers go, we'd close down the screen and just put on JAWS, which is this software that talks to a person who's blind to let them know what's on the screen and see if it worked functionally. So hopefully the city will consider that dynamic. But I know that, I know that Matt and his team has worked extensively to make sure that this new website is accessible. So applause to you guys for working on that and having that as part of your contract. I also mentioned, I also brought up this one area, too, because I think it involves life and death situations. And really, I really strongly recommend you look at this section because for people with disabilities, and I had a friend who was the head of emergency planning for the whole state of California, was appointed by the president then of the United States to do it for the whole country. And one of the things that happened in Katrina was that there was not enough emergency evacuation equipment for people to get out. 178 people in wheelchairs died in Katrina because they didn't have the right transportation to get people out of there quick enough. And so looking at that, looking at your shelters, I know that you have the responsibility for certain shelters in the city, making sure that there's refrigeration, making sure you have a place for service animals, making sure you have a generator because people who are in wheelchairs, especially power chairs, those kinds of things, they're going to go out and you have to make sure that there is a way that doesn't happen. And after COVID, we have had an increase of about 150% of people using respirators, portable respirators. So we know that that's going to be a factor, too. Most, those are battery powered, but they're usually rechargeable battery power. Anyway, this is just one of the areas of those many areas that we looked at. Again, I'm not sharing all of them. These are some of the things we look at as important in the actual planning for your shelters. So the transition plan for purpose and scope. So it's really to set forth, to complete all the modifications identified through the self evaluation, provide a schedule for completing those modifications, identify the programs, services, and procedures which will be modified or created. Now, we've done that already, but that has to be adopted. And that adoption has to be done, can only be done by, I think, the city council. So you're one of the officials who are responsible for helping to implement this, but actually, your entire city staff is really responsible for implementing the plan. The estimated cost for programs, services, and activities, the cost is relatively low comparatively. If you look at what it costs to do buildings and stuff, it's relatively low. And some of them don't cost anything, like modifying a procedure or looking at your policies on certain things, it don't cost a thing. It is a matter of adopting it and then putting it to practice. So you can adopt something and you can have a policy, but then you have to train staff to make sure, okay, this is how we're going to do if a blind person comes to the front counter or a deaf person comes to the front counter, what are we going to do to remedy some of those things? And then, as Greg mentioned earlier, to create a status column to record completion. Actually, I just want to go to the recommendations for the transition plan. The ADA coordinator be identified quickly for the city to be. And in the past, there has been someone identified, but that's changed now, especially that Brian's unfortunately going to be leaving your city. Brian's a great advocate, and I think hopefully his good work will continue on. I know you can never replace good people, so, but I know you guys will try. Second is that there should be, I recommend that there should be a standing committee, some kind of a committee to assist the ADA coordinator in the formation, implementation of the transition plan. And that the, it should be noted that all city staff are responsible, as I mentioned before. Develop a schedule and prioritization. I think that's critical. Prioritizing what you want to do or having this committee, if that's the way you decide to go, really prioritize, like, okay, we need to get the ADA coordinator first, we need to work on emergency planning, we need to work on getting a grievance process. Those are some of the things that I recommend, actually, because you guys need a grievance process so that people who have concerns can have a place to go to and voice those. Identify any funding necessary to execute the transition plan. Consider establishing a focus group. This is something I really believe in. Our students used to say nothing about us without us, that if you're going to be talking about people with disabilities, probably a good idea to include people with disabilities in the decision-making process. So it might be good to have some citizens with disabilities that review, review the plan and look at it as well. And I recommend every two or three years of the transition plan, the committee would look at getting public input to the plan. And I've, I have appendices in this report that do all this stuff. It's a letter that can go out to constituents to look at and ask for feedback. I have even a letter, like, for example, in the emergency evacuation, because I'm a believer that you should identify where people with disabilities are, again, because of the transportation thing, it's something that's very near and dear to my heart and concern in my heart. So it's good to know where people with disabilities live so that they can be contacted and gone to first when there's an emergency. And have city council adopt and approve the transition plan. Okay. Kathy? Any question? Oh, you had a question about your question before, if you want to re-ask that real quick.
I guess this could be questions for the future that, and like I said, you know, we just got this last night, so I did a quick look, but there's some specifics in this.
Not a one-night reading, yeah.
No. So obviously, I'll say there's some low-hanging fruit, that a lot of this is just signage that, you know, would fall under just maintenance to catch up on this.
Yes.
But for the future, a couple of these jumped out at me. And one of them was that we recently installed electric vehicle charging stations in the front of City Hall. I'm going to say those are not even a year old. How did we miss the ADA requirements on that? And what can we do in the future? Because if I look at that, I mean, okay, it's not much, relocate everything into $2,500, but shouldn't ever happened.
I think you need to understand that California is the only place in the world that has any ADA requirements for charging stations. We're, we're unique at it, we do everything better, right?
Right. But not to interrupt, but we used a California architect or engineer consultant to design it all.
You know, I think typically what happens, and I've dealt with this problem with the County of Riverside, because they had a bunch of EV charging stations installed. The installers aren't up to the current code. The code is fairly new over the last couple of years. And I think they just go out and they, well, we get this all the time. Well, over in that city, we got to do it that way.
Right.
You know, and you're like, okay, well, that was wrong over there. And so that could possibly be why it wasn't put together quite correctly.
But I would think that we have an inspector looking at that, that work, that installation.
I will tell you that since we got started on this, this project, we've actually sort of gratis reviewed several civil engineering plans for new parking lots to make sure that they were correct. That was something that I did, you know, for Brian and make sure that, you know, I said, Brian, if you're getting ready to redo some of these parking lots that we're getting ready to evaluate, let's make sure they're done correctly before we go out and discover that brand-new work is incomplete. I just think it's the inspection, the people that inspect the work.
Our inspectors should be in their education.
Most inspectors are compliant enough to catch that.
Greg, just to add to your comment for the future, one of the things, once we've adopted this as part of Greg's contract, is he was going to come back and provide training. And that's where it will be essential for our inspectors in the future, our planning department, our field staff, and everyone go through those trainings because it will get us current on whatever is going on. Plus, when we're out there to inspect, whether it be on a city property or another property, we're going to be more likely to catch things like that.
And that kind of leads me into our, the next one was like in animal control. You have a restaurant, excuse me, a restroom that was a swing and a miss on grab bars, toilet dispensers, you know, and elevations and offsets and things like that. It's a relatively new section of that remodel when it was done. And, you know, by your evaluation, how did you miss that? I mean, not you, but how did we miss that? Just a complete miss. And that, that's something that all inspectors check, so.
You want to realize, too, that our qualification to evaluate ADA is like top-notch.
Right.
Your building inspectors are inspecting all aspects of the construction. And that's all we focus on is ADA. And, you know, they have to, they have to inspect everything. They don't always have the time and the ability maybe to catch everything. And so, and some cities, some cities require developers that when they build new facilities to hire their own casp like us to make sure that they go out and check it.
Right. And we've done that on our projects also, but it's just kind of, what do we need to do better? So, you know, this is all brand-new and now we're removing it. So I have another one.
Can I touch on one thing on that, Greg? We actually worked on the animal shelter. One of the things that has happened as well, because that's been, it's newer, but it's still.
Right.
It's been a while ago. And some of the code things have changed. So some of the things were installed at that time, what met the code, but now that the code has changed, like the toilet paper being a certain distance, what they're allowing now for the distance from the center of the toilet to the side. You have to go from the center line of the toilet to the sink. And those, some of those things weren't in the code back when that building was done.
Yeah. But it all goes around the five-foot circle, so.
But the five-foot circle is still in there.
Right.
It's just some of these additional things before we might have been able to get away with being in an overall seven-foot wide space, now it might be seven foot six because they added an additional from the center line of the toilet to the edge of the sink.
So would those become a higher or a lower priority cost-wise for us to do in the next 20 years if, let's say, three, four years ago it was installed as per the code at that time, and then the code has changed till today? Are you then tearing out all that tile and reinstalling grab bars and toilet dispensers? Or if it met the code four or five years ago, are you still okay with that?
Let me, let me respond to that. Only in cases of litigation do we actually go back and research when the building was built and go look at the older codes. What we've done is we're just simply telling you, if you go into that building and you're getting ready to do anything to it, this is the code that you have to meet. All the litigators that are out there, they go with the current standards. They don't go back and research it. So Kathy's correct. It used to be 12 inches to a toilet tissue dispenser, now it's seven to nine inches, okay? Do people litigate over that? Yeah, they do.
They do.
They do. And because they know they can get a settlement out of court.
But Greg, is there a process because it was built to the correct code at the time that it was done versus now by the current code, it's not compliant? Is there some, I know that we kind of talked on that earlier.
In litigation, I would step up and I would present on your behalf and your defense that that claim is not valid because that building was built back there. But none of these But none of these cases go to court, you know? I've only, you know, in 15 years, I've only had two cases go to court. Actually, both of them, one on the defense side. And, you know, it just, they sue because it's not in the current location. And, and the quickest and best thing to do is to settle out of court. So.
Have two more.
Yeah, go ahead.
Be done. Fire Station 47 in the on-duty dormitory. You noted that there was no, any ADA accessible fixtures. And this is, my question's kind of like you brought up spirit of law to letter of law. That if you're an on-duty fireman, okay, and you're in that dormitory, I would typically think you are not challenged in any manner. So would that shower in the on-call dormitory at the fire station really have to, do we need to spend $20,000 to bring that up? I guess that's.
The regulations say yes.
Okay.
In fact, that was the same question we got from one of the commissioners that, you know, the, and, and so the answer to that is, yes, you do, because it was the only toilet room available for the facility. And there might be a situation where you're going to have a fireman that's injured and he might, might be in a chair and he's still on light duty, but they've got him in there helping with something. But he's not responding to calls. And so it needs to be, yeah.
All right. So I'll give you my last one. This comes under the did not know. On one of my projects, which I did not know, that you have to have a path of travel to the trash enclosures.
That.
Is difficult.
I, sometimes I don't agree with that. Okay. And, and we run into that a lot. And it would be like, let's say it was a residential facility. We see that a lot of building inspectors say, oh, you need a path of travel to the dumpster and you need to ramp up so somebody in a wheelchair can dump their things into a dumpster. You will agree with me, the idea is equivalent facilitation. That's key, key word.
Right.
Equivalent facilitation. If somebody in a wheelchair in an apartment needed their trash put in the dumpster and that facility had a program that someone would collect their trash at their door on Monday mornings, then you don't need that path of travel.
Well, let's say City Hall, you did not have it noted, I think, on, on your stuff, this trash enclosure right out here.
Right.
That, would it be required to have a, a legal path of travel?
Also, as of July 1st of this year, we had a triennial code change in California. And there's now an exemption that paths of travel in outdoor staff areas don't have to be wheelchair compliant. So for the very first time in the code, there's now some wording that, that would allow us to make findings that you don't need a wheelchair path to your dumpster.
Okay. I had to do it on an industrial job. And, and how do you do that under crossfall of less than 2% in a parking lot?
Yes. Yeah. In my opinion, I don't think it's appropriate.
Right.
Yeah. And now we have some code language in there.
Okay.
Thank you. One of the things you may consider too, when you're looking at compliance, because I had a couple of visits from the Office of Civil Rights at the university a couple of times. You don't want to do that. But if you do, one of the things they will look at is your intent. And if you've made good faith efforts to remedy issues and you've had some kind of prioritization of what's your remedy. And so I think that's always something to keep at the back of your mind. Are we making a good faith effort? Are we trying to remediate? Are we trying to solve some of these issues, some of these problems, some of these policies? Whatever the case may be, that's what they'll look at. And if you've done nothing, then, then they will come down on you. But if you've done, made a good faith effort and you're trying to remedy these, they'll work with you.
Intent to discriminate is what you don't want added to an ADA lawsuit. And that's not going to happen because you've now are in the process of fulfilling your requirements under the federal ADA.
Just to add to the presentation, in, in the schedule, as you see that, that'll be predicated on the, the cost and prioritization and over a 20-year period. And part of that would be identified annually in our CIP program of projects that we need to do. And so this document was very helpful for us because, one, it was an eye-opening and for all of our staff and a good education. And we, we, and part of our contract allows us to continue with education with Greg for our inspectors, field staff, planning staff. So, and, and there's not a number in there. So we, we're going to continue that process, working with them after this is adopted. My experience in working with a transition plan and self-evaluation is purely what they said is that you need to have that good faith effort and you need to have something in place and you diligently need to start working towards those things. And as we complete something, the consultants were very clear about actually showing that we corrected it, photojournalizing that, and then identifying the date so that those can be part of a completion process. So that'll be something that we work on in the future. The programming side of it and scheduling and looking at facilities and operation was real eye-opening for all of us. And we, so I would say that we left this process knowing a lot more than we did before. And it allowed us to start thinking about how other people will feel and putting ourselves in that place. And how do we provide better communication, accessibility, and not, and making them feel there's no inclusion here, that, that they have that opportunity. So it's, it's going to be a work in progress, but it's, it's what we have to do. And I know Andy is supportive of this process. And one of the comments he made, he did also with David was, I thought I knew a lot more. And I didn't know that. And, and I said the same thing. And I said, well, I thought I, and so it was really eye-opening for us. And it helped us understand a lot better. I know that both Dana, myself, Kelly from our communications side, Matt, it helped us a lot of trying to understand and putting ourselves out, how do we get that information out there? So I think in all, and the goal of a plan like this is to create that roadmap for the future and then prioritize those projects that can done. Because when this was originally established in 90 and 92 became a part of the law, there was no way that it could be implemented. There was not enough money for cities or anybody to do this. So it's really about providing reasonable accommodation and trying to have a plan to implement that over a period of time. And for us, we didn't really have a formal plan, which is required, and now we do.
Anything else, Greg? Catherine?
Yes, thank you. In the accessibility report, there were several recommendations too around, some around programs and some around equipment, I would say. Are those all included in the, in the, those wouldn't be in the facility evaluation reports, correct?
No, there were two separate, yeah, two separate reports.
Okay, so, okay. I just want to make sure, like, some of them where it talked about the need for annual training. It talked about one of the things, having a list of, for example, ASL interpreters. But then we would also need in the budget, so if somebody requested those services, to be able to have those services. Another one I saw was tables that move up and down. So just looking at making sure we, we have all of these other things that would really go a long way in terms of accessibility accounted for in addition to what's in.
Do you have a copy of my report?
Yeah, it was in the binder as well.
Okay. So in the last section, there is a cost estimate that talks about, and also some recommendations. For example, of getting lists of qualified interpreters, captioners, you know, working with Norco. Community College is right here, as well as Riverside Community College, which is not far down the road. Those people have already done that. They already have lists of interpreters, qualified interpreters, qualified captioners. They also have people who can do brailing and put materials into brails. One of the recommendations that I made was that to develop that list, develop a rapport with those colleges to be available to you. So if you do have a request, like somebody wants to come to a council meeting and they are deaf, you can have an interpreter.
When we were doing the, during COVID and we went to closed-meeting type situation, and one of the things we didn't look at is closed caption, having that ability for everyone. So those are all things that we just didn't think of. And until David really brought that to our attention. But he'd actually, in, I guess we could all say, when we were in those trainings, it wasn't just bringing it to us. He put us in that person's position. So you felt, you felt helpless almost. And then you really realized how they may feel. And that really, I think, sparked our staff to have a whole different view of why we need to do this and we need to do it. One of the things that was mentioned that once this is approved, which will come to you before the, on the 15th, is that we will be setting up a team within City Hall to process and implementation. And then the city manager has indicated that that'll be evaluated on ongoing. HR will be a big lead in that, our future facilities and infrastructure director, things like that. Michelle from the programming and facility side. So all of those things will be part of that, plus additional staff within the city so that we are properly getting everyone trained, educated, and that we have a continuous process for that.
So when this comes back to council then, will the plan, the plan will then have, be broken into phases per se or have dates? We're looking at what is the low-hanging fruit that we can accomplish rather quickly versus what's going to take more time or more money?
I, I think what I see for that to happen, that's going to take a little more individual work within us now that we've been educated. So what I see that we do is we would probably adopt this, because that's really what it does. It adopts you, it adopts, it gives us a plan. Now what we have to do is come back and then I, what I would recommend to Andy is that we bring an update to you. Here's what we're processing. And every year, probably during the budget process or through a workshop format or something, we show you where we are making improvements, what new trainings are being processed. And that becomes part of our annual routine as we move through these phases.
And adopting it without any timelines, is that, does that meet our legal compliance, just saying we've identified these things? Or do we actually have to have a, because what I heard is it becomes a plan when it has dates, correct? Like, we need kind of phases of, you know, here's what we're going to do in the first five years, or here's what we're going to do in the next five. Is that, can you clarify for me?
In the, on the physical barrier side, there has been dates identified.
It's a one-page.
Summary.
Document, and it's a summary, so it lists each building, the dollar amount that's associated.
Do we have that for programs as well or for the other recommendations?
We'll, we'll work through that.
Okay.
If we do not, that is something that does have to be done. So, but I'm, I'm willing to work with, with staff on that.
Yeah, we, and I think part of that is we got so trapped into the physical part that we knew we needed to have dates and that type thing, that we kind of got a little bit lost in the programming. But as David said, that's something that we can work with them on coming back to.
Does that have to have dates as well? Because both parts are needed for compliance, right? Not just the physical?
Year, third year, fourth year, whatever.
But as part, okay. It should, okay.
We should have some kind of prioritization too.
As well, okay. And that's what this does with the dates, right?
Right.
Yeah, okay.
And I actually do believe that those dates are able to change as we, as the city manager sees fit.
It's a living document.
It is dynamic. That's what you have to look at. This, this report, this plan is dynamic. Has Greg rightly said, codes change, things change. This, I've been doing this for a long time with ADA and it's changed dramatically. I mean, I dealt with Section 504 of the Rehab Act of 1973 first. That was the first federal mandate that came out that said federally funded programs had to be accessible before ADA came out. So I've dealt with accommodations, accessibility, all those things since 1978, when they finally promulgated regulations. But it is, it is important to realize it's dynamic, that it's not static. This plan can change and has the flexibility and ability to change as codes change, as requirements change, et cetera.
As funding changes.
As funding changes.
And we've set it up for a 20-year transitional, but.
I, I do think that the programming side, activity side has a much shorter timeframe for implementation because some of it's policy-driven, which is pretty easy to do. Some of it's resource-driven to have available to us. Dana and I were talking about, you know, when someone asked for, that might be hearing impaired. And at one time, I believe the city had these apparatuses. We can't find the apparatuses. So where do we need to have those things? So the list that David provided us, what we need, we need to start implementing that. That could be as soon as mid-year budget process. But that, that, a lot of that side needs to be done and probably some timeframe. So we can go back and maybe put in some schedules that are realistic too, because that's, I mean, that's real important of when we could implement those.
It could be also as simple as, for example, in the emergency, emergency planning area, it can say, in January, these recommendations will be sent to the Emergency Evacuation Planning Committee. I don't know what you call it, but the committee that deals with evacuation and emergency planning. It can be that simple. Want to do with implement, but it, it can say, it's January, this will be sent to that committee so that they can begin to implement.
No, I was just going to thank you all for your work and staff for your work. This is, this is very robust. There's a lot of information. It's, it's very clear. It's easy to see. And I think it, it really is helpful in identifying the things that we can do and a lot of things that I think we can easily do to make sure that our city is accessible to our residents. I think that's really important. So, thank you.
Robin?
And I apologize for my faculty comments. I love faculty. So my best friends are faculty.
Hey, I was the one that put my foot in it. Give me a break. Robin, anything?
One of the things I wanted to note is the overall schedule gives you for the conclusion of that bill?
Yeah.
Just hand sanitize. Brought down and then it's checked off of those items. And then there are some that are.
Robin?
I'm not sure who's going to answer, but my question would be, as the policymakers that are making the final adoption and saying, yes, we agree to this, what is the methodology being used to prioritize items? Are we talking about what Catherine said, we're going to pick all the low-hanging fruit, quick stuff first? Or is there a certain building or facility and we're going to base it off the number of people or persons using? That as the policymaker, I would certainly like to know between the December 2nd and December 14th window, who's making those decisions? On what grounds are they making those decisions? Because getting a document, even if it was on time Thursday, reading through that and making a decision and giving final approval, I'd like to know the methodology used to be putting that document forward. I know Greg mentioned it. I like to come prepared to meetings. So we had this, this came on Monday evening, I believe. It's a lot to digest. And now we're going to say on the 15th, we're going to adopt this and it must have dates and priorities. I need some answers, how those are being determined, who is determining them before I sign off on it. So I don't know who answers that question.
Let me answer it. Just based on some of the dialogue and looking at the programs and program services side, we maybe, the 15th was a date I set. But as our, trying to have a goal in mind, however, it could be pushed to the January time to give us time to maybe respond to all of those questions and make sure that we bring back at that adoption, a clear, concise. The object, the object, the objective tonight was really what I'm hearing, which is it's a workshop. It's a working format. What questions come up? What things that would make you feel clear about adopting a program or service? And I'm hearing clearly, there's some more information you guys want and more precise direction on policy and how that's going to be and who's making those decisions. So I think that, that probably needs to come back and we talk about that one more time and to finalize that before we adopt this plan, which this is, as I said, this is a living document, but it's forever. So. a living document, but it's forever, so.
Well, I think there should be some discussion among the policymakers as what our priorities are. Is it based on populations attending facilities? Is it based on low hanging fruit where a person can go out and put up 25 signs in a week or the truncated, you know, ramp stuff? Or is that a staff decision? I don't know at this point in time, whose decision is that or where those decisions are being made. So if that's something where staff has to go back and have a huddle and decide and then come back to council again, I'm fine with that. I just want to be provided some direction as we're reviewing these documents and making decisions of how that is being moved forward.
Ted?
I'd like to ask, you know, I don't like getting this. I've been gone for two days and come back and I find this on my doorstep this morning. You know, that, it just, to me it's wrong. It's, not your fault, poor planning on staff's fault. Well, I'll be honest with you. I like the time to read the stuff to see what I'm going to look at. And I'm looking at your timeline and over 20 years. And I know this is just a guideline, it's nothing. But I'm looking at the effect that this is going to have. Several of these facilities are in our landscape maintenance districts. That's going to be upon them. That's going to cost those residents funding unless it comes out of the general fund. You're looking at a $2 million price tag and the way that prices are going up, I would imagine in 20 years, that's a $4 million price tag, easily. I, because it goes up. And I appreciate you guys going out. I saw you guys going out early in the year. I saw you up at Ingles. Our existing facilities is one thing we have control on and I agree with that. And I'll take Ingles for example. We went up there and you went up there when there's nothing going on. Three times a year or four or greater, we bring in a lot of rentals. Things that are probably not ADA compliant. How do we address that? That's going to have to be addressed by staff and what we bring in. And I know they're not compliant because I'm one of the guys that has to push a wheelchair through there. I know the problem in them. We have volunteer organizations that are up there that rely on our staff to make sure that they're in compliant because that's our facility. Yet we rely on outside agents or outside contractors to put those bleachers in and those access in, hoping that they are, and you just told me earlier that not everybody knows the rules. These guys have probably been putting up these seats for the last 10 years under the same guidelines because that was the rules that they were taught. Bottom line is, it's not the contractor, it's us. As a city, they're responsible to make sure that those, is it the responsibility of the hiring group, the nonprofit group that hired them to put them in, hopefully that they're approved? I know we have a city inspector that goes out there and expects to make sure that those bleachers are correctly put in. But we just learned that our inspector doesn't even know some of the rules or that he just hasn't been up to date on it. So there is an educational process here and I'm glad you guys are doing that. And, but it behooves us as, as a city to make sure that we want, protect these groups. I'm looking, I said, I just read through some of this stuff. I got a kick out of you picked on my little portable announcer stand that is just that. It was built because we didn't have a place else. I threw that stuff together for groups and that's being evaluated. It's never been evaluated. You can take that, we can move that around. But what I'm getting at here is there are, we need to probably, and this is a good idea as a staff and looking at this and priority wise and everybody else will say the same. I just was blindsided by coming home and having all this on my doorstep, to be honest with you. So.
And we were not paid by the page, so.
No, and granted, reading this beast is bad enough and trying to go through it, then I didn't even get a chance even to open part of this one. That one's easier to read? Okay, then I'm going to read that one then because, I mean, this was, like I said, I came back already at two, I had a 2:00 PM meeting this morning. I had an 8:00 AM meeting in Vegas and then came here and drove home and had a 2:00 PM meeting already. So this is already boom, so.
If I might address some of your concerns about Ingles, there are certain exemptions when it comes to porta potties and, and portable structures and stuff like that. And actually, Ingles checked out pretty good. Did you know that the DG surface out there is firm and stable enough for wheelchairs?
First hand.
Right.
We change it and the groups come. How would you feel if you had to push a wheelchair through three inches of sawdust on there? You're shaking your head and you know what the issue is. How would you feel if your little electric scooter that you have Wi-Fi to use collects all that sawdust? But we do the sawdust because it's a dust reduct, a reducer, so that people don't have to do that because of the DG. What I'm getting at here is if we are going to allow that as a city and as an event center up there, we need to have clear cut rules. I understand DG. I, I've been with, worked with ADA access for my life every time, ever since we started doing DGs on the trail and not only here but other areas and looking for alternative ways to, to use that. Come and find out that DG is always as compacted properly as the best thing. But I'll miss, as our groups come through and our nonprofit groups and our special events groups come through, they're looking at other things too. And do they modify? Yes, they do. What do we do? And what, are there any rules in place for them to say yes or no? That's what I'm getting at is we need, that's how we need to think if we're going to make that group, that facility that changes all the time.
And I think, you know, what Brian had discussed earlier about having that ADA corner coordinator backed up by a focus group and advisory group of locals, that could go a long way where you put that in front of them and say, how are we going to make this event, you know, more accessible to the disabled? And you have their recommendation because there's, especially at Ingles, there's a lot of gray areas out there that when you, you come in and configure it for different events, you know, it's, it's very difficult to sit down and say, this is what the regulation says. And another thing about Ingles that is not in our report because it's not part of the regulations, but you might want to get some recommendations on how to make people in wheelchairs that are horsemen, you know, to be able to get on the horses, ramps that go up. I've been to, I know, if you're familiar with Quimaca, they, Rancho State Park up there, they have a, they have a horse campground and one of their sites is ADA compliant. But there are no requirements for that, but there are recommendations. So in a case like that, you could maybe go beyond the regulations. And we didn't cover that again because it's not a specific regulation.
But, but you bring up a great point, which is planning. And one of the things that I looked at was a checklist for events, for example, when you have events for the city to look at so you can begin to, again, that whole thing that I mentioned about a forethought. You know, how do we, how do we plan this event with a person in a wheelchair in mind? And if we thought about it and we put sawdust down, that probably wasn't a good idea. We probably realized maybe now that we've been trained, that that's probably not a good idea to have sawdust down there or other kind of service, surface or we're not wide enough places in between stalls or whatever the case may be. So again, I think it is a dynamic situation. But again, I totally agree with Greg in that when you begin to include people with disabilities in the decision-making process or in the idea process, it's great. Because, I'll tell you, I'll give you a quick example. So we had a problem with our graduation ceremony at the university. Person in a wheelchair to graduate, they had to stop the whole ceremony. Person went up when my students affectionately call the carbillift. Stop the whole ceremony. Person would come up, cross the stage, shake hand with the president, come back, and then they would start the whole ceremony again. Well, people with disabilities, again, I'm generalizing a little bit, but don't want to be the center of attention because they're always the center of attention. If they're in care or if they have a cane or if they're doing sign language, they're always the center of attention. This is said is we want to graduate like everybody else, you know? So why can't you get some damn ramps rather than stairs and have everybody go up there? Statement that I always make, and I know Greg probably would agree with this, but makes good sense for people with disabilities, makes good sense for everybody. Because you know who, who told us they loved the, two people told us they loved the ramps instead of the stairs? Women who didn't, weren't used to using high heels all the time and were graduating, having to go upstairs was a little more difficult when you, when you had high heels on that you weren't used to using. And all the AV techs who had to lug all this, you know, 200 pound speakers and all that kind of stuff, rather than get them upstairs, they can now use the ramps. So make people with disabilities a part of the solution. And so that's easily done by, by making a procedure or a policy that says, you know, we'll be inclusive, we want to be, have people inclusive, helping us to come up with a checklist for events or activities that are going on in the city so that we can avoid those kind of situations. So that, and they can hand that to somebody too who they may have, who may have contracted to use your facilities as well.
All done, Ted?
Yeah.
Interesting you should say that because we do a wheelchair basketball tournament here. Did we change the door on that already, by the way?
Yes.
Well, one of the things that was just amazing is that they, they don't want help. They go through there, they'll pull the wheel off their wheelchair just to go through the side thing and they just want to be, so it was very illuminating watching them and, and working with them and so.
And the thing to realize is not all people with, in wheelchairs have the same disability or have the same personality.
Right, right. These are all, these are athletes.
Yeah, these are athletes that you're talking about. You learned that probably from watching these guys and how great athletes they are. There may not, it's not true for everyone, so.
So I'm going to open this now to public comments. Opening public comments now. Do we have any public comments?
I have no public comments, Mayor.
Closing public comments, bring it back to council for comments, direction. Yes, Greg?
Well, first to Ted, which announcer stand are you talking about at Ingles Park?
Oh, my little wooden one I had to put up there.
Oh, okay. Not the one at Marino? Okay, good. So I have a question on the facility cost estimates. In the binder here, it was dated the 29th for a million seven. And then the one you passed out today dated November 30th, let's say 2.1 million, that you add it to 304,000, let's say $305,000 for Silver Lakes.
Silver Lakes is on there as an overall budget, but is indicated by others. Brian says that that will be, that they will be performing. So when we laid out the schedule, we put it as item 30, because there's 30 buildings that we want. So we have to put it in there as a, as a placeholder, but it's, it's been indicated that
Why would it even be a placeholder? We're not on the hook for this. Why would we, why would we care? That's what it says by others. We will forward this to them, this evaluation, they're going to have to come up with a plan to implement it, just like we are. So it's going to have to be something they're going to have to do and submit to us. Okay, so you're Because it's still, we still own the facility, but they're responsible for those public improvements. Absolutely. So the, the 305,000 is just kind of a guesstimate? Or did you physically?
It's, it's based on the work that was laid out in the report.
Okay.
On the barriers of where in that report.
In, not in this one?
In that report, yes.
No, I didn't see a tab for Silver Lakes, I'm sorry.
Greg, there should be a detail that in your other handouts that actually goes into each facility.
Okay, I was looking at the tabs.
Yesterday we got, there wasn't a tab for it, but we did get the Silver Lakes evaluation and the new
Okay, so it's in the other binder then?
Well, it's, we got them yesterday, the new, the new filler, but there wasn't a tab for, there was two things that weren't tabs for.
Oh, maybe, maybe they ran out of tabs.
Yeah.
It may just not have been a tab between the reports. There's a report for each.
Okay. So I guess this is looking towards what we're going to do in two weeks. Are we going to consider that $300,000? The reason I did by others is because I don't think it's, I think it's, it's our obligation to bring it to their attention, and John can chime in on this, but those are public improvements if they need to be done. I think the agreement we have with them is they need to do those improvements. And if they've missed something, just like we've missed something, we have to have a plan to fix it. So, and you can see onsite path to travel. If you go through the actual photo pictures, there's an actual item number for each one of those and a cost estimate when you look at it. And if you can't find it, make sure you do have it. But those are things that I will forward over to Silver Lakes staff for them to look at in their upcoming capital projects and investment. But it's not something that the city, I feel, should be on the hook for paying for.
No, and remember, as Brian said, that Silver Lakes actually is a public facility in the sense that we're the lessor, but we have a lease which requires that they do that.
I don't know, I'm just kind of anticipating that, you know, on their list of items that are going to be done, it's going to be, hey, you inspected it, I'm not on the hook for this. So.
Well, it wouldn't be the first time that we've gotten in an argument with them.
Really? Okay. All right.
Well, you, I should say.
I'm just curious on $300,000 being in our total.
I have one more, I just have one more comment. I just want to second Councilmember Grant Myers' comments regarding how the prioritization is done. And one thing that in noting of Councilmember Hoffman's comments, I see that on this timeline, there's really only three facility projects that are set to be done within the next four years. And my preference would be to look at the projects. What are the low hanging fruit, the easy things to do? And what are the things that, our facilities that are visited the most? And, you know, when we have people who need city services, they need access. And what I want to avoid is passing the buck to future councils, pushing all these back. Oh, we have 20 years, so we'll do most of these in 10, 15 years. And then as Councilmember Hoffman said, costs are going to go way up. So taking that into account, not just pushing everything off so that this is just, again, kind of kicking the can down the road, but that we look at how can we really make some good progress and what are those things that really need to be done? That example of, you know, the restroom that was just built a few years ago that wasn't compliant, then, you know, maybe that's not something that needs to be done, but there are other things, maybe more than just three, you know, within the next five years that need to be done and are financially feasible to be done.
Just, just a general comment, that the schedule is kind of like a budget. It's a living document. So that one of the things that based, I mean, that, all the things you suggest, it sounds to me like require a great deal of discussion, moving them around and what the costs are, blah, blah, blah. That one of the things that when you start looking at the budget for next year, that those can be, all these can be a part of that discussion. I mean, you could decide to do them all in one year if you wanted to.
Realistically, yeah. And I want to convey what John was saying there and I didn't want to jump in until now, but the way I envision this document and how it's done is it's just that. And unfortunately, the impression right now is you guys are put on this pressure to approve this thing in this order. And the reality is it's a working document that is simply identifying the deficiencies the city has to address in a timeline. And the, the dates on there are just dates. You, you work to that if you can, you shift them based off what your priorities are. And in addition, a lot of these items may end up being done with bigger projects that need to be done, which is another discussion that, that the staff needs to have with council about your priorities, about the bigger projects with rehabbing buildings and, and building new projects, et cetera, where some of these items will get addressed at that time, which gives you an economy of scale. So a lot of this, as John indicated, would likely be done. My assumption is it's going to be done by the director once we hire one, that he would use that, he or she would use that as a, as a document to understand the things they need to do and figure out as priorities of council for certain projects get done, some of those will be added in there. Some will also be done as specific projects because maybe it is an easy low hanging fruit to do. At the same time, they're going to figure out where's the money coming from to do those things, which is again, discussion from council. Do you want it from the general fund? Is it going to be a measure R discussion? Does it even qualify for that, et cetera? So the day So the dates are not critical as far as that you have to meet them, because you can change them every year. Because you can identify the money's not available, so we're shifting a year. You're bringing it forward because money's available. So I, I, I know on your first look, it's like you're having to approve it, you're stuck with it, or another council's stuck with it. It is simply meant to say, here's the things that the professionals have identified. And you do need to kind of throw out a theoretical plan of a date and spread it out so you can try to achieve those goals, but they're completely movable at any time, based off what you need to do and your, your preferences. So it's, it's a difficult question to answer for, as Councilman Grunmeyer talked about, is how, what's the criteria? I envision it's really going to be something staff's going to try to bring forward that is proper and balanced such that it is taking care of low hanging fruit, that makes sense, assuming the money's there, adding some of these things to bigger projects so they get done at one time, because it makes sense, rather than going back doing it again and again, and when we were already there. So there's going to be multiple things, I would imagine, staff's going to try to rationalize why we're asking to bring a certain item at a certain time. And then we have to explain it to you, because obviously, just to get the funding, you're going to approve it and say, whether you like that or not, as a project at that time, because we're going to ask for the budget money ahead of time, I have to explain the rationale to you at that time.
Just, most of these documents that I've seen done by agencies are typically 20 to 30 years over a period of time. And they are evaluated annually, and some projects are done in one large swoop. The second part of this whole assessment is your public right of way, which you have to do. And so obviously, you can't do all of that in one shot. So when you're looking at that, obviously, those are going to be probably put together as one big project when you do a street or whatever. Similar to facilities, the same thing, we would be, the Riley Gym Project, which we had our pre-construction meeting today, already has evaluated the deficiencies, so that gym will meet all new current code when we're done. So we're going to do that in one swoop, where those things will be all taken off the list, because they were evaluated before we award this contract. So there are things that are going to get done. In talking with Todd and Ron, some of the low hanging fruit, they've already put together a schedule to start to do. But I, but it, this document has to be kind of flexible and living, because it can't. I do agree with Robin in saying that we should be looking and having a discussion of, which is part of that bigger discussion of priorities amongst you guys as to what's, what's important, you know? Obviously, I think low hanging fruit is an automatic, we're going to work on those and get them done. I think when we look at that discussion of facilities that have greater access or special events, has a lot more visitors attending, do you prioritize that one over this one? That's a much deeper question. The question is, we got to do them all. Which ones are we going to look at first? And I think that's going to take a little work from us to be able to do it. So it probably doesn't make sense to bring this back the 15th, but put it out into January so that we can do a little more work on that to bring you guys some things to think about. Perhaps even another workshop, a more smaller version, to talk about priority setting before we move to adoption. So that's something, when Andy gets back, I'll talk to him about, but maybe that's a better strategy in this case.
Yeah, although, although adopting it on the 15th, as we've discussed, doesn't put anything in concrete, and I expect that you will have those workshops and spend that time to develop what your priorities are, notwithstanding the fact that at least you met the requirements of getting it done by the 15th.
All right, thank you Chad and Brian for clarifying. I thank you gentlemen and lady for.
I was, I was just going to say one other thing. In every building, or every facility, or every parking lot, there's some parts of it that are low hanging fruit, but I don't think that there's any building that you can go in and say the entire work can be done as low hanging fruit. So that was why the dates were kind of set up. Michelle and I kind of worked on these, and we knew that it was going to take input from staff and that there was going to be adjustments. But in looking at it, what we tried to do was look at what were your highest publicly used facilities that you have, you know, it's not to say that all of these facilities, we don't want to make them accessible and that they don't need to be made accessible, it's just which ones have a higher percentage maybe of public? And that was kind of some of our rationale that we used in, in putting together some of the dates.
And on the program side, I think your point is real valid. You know as faculty members, that if a student doesn't have a certain accommodation in your classroom, that student can't go, you're discriminating against that student, that student can file a complaint against you. So on the program services and activities side, what we look at is, so where, where do I see the city as, where do we see the city being most affordable? I understand the law, I understand what happened, but program staff understands, managers understand, like, what, what really needs to happen day to day, city making the city run. So I always call it using the expertise, and I always use the faculty as part of the expertise of that. Expertise, the student has the knowledge of the law and compliance, and the faculty has understanding of the course. So it's a little different in this situation, but coach, of using expertise to be part of that decision-making process. Some have a meeting, for example, there's no grievance. If the city has a grievance against the city, there's not, there's not a grievance process. So that may be a high priority. ADA coordinator, since they're going to be overseeing all of what's going on, a high priority to get that identified, settled, and done. So look at those kind of things.
All right, thank you very much. We have to move on to our next item. We appreciate it. Moving on to 2A splash pad discussion. Michelle? Good evening, Michelle.
The purpose of this presentation right now is just to have a dialogue and receive feedback for a future splash pad project, and the prioritization of future capital improvement projects. If you know me, I'm excited to say, we're doing programs for creating community through people parks, trails, and programs. And splash pads foster physical development, providing sensory simulation through tactile interactions with water sprays, streams, and jets. Splash pads encourage the development of our gross motor movement through jumping, running, dodging, and create an experience of imagination. As you know, recently, we demolished the, the only community center pool that we had. This year, in June, city council during the budget review for capital improvement projects asked staff to look at opportunities for the development of a splash pad and possible locations for placement. Since then, staff has met with Parks and Recreation Commission and discussed options and felt that the community center, Neal Snipes Park and Pike's Peak Park were optimally suited for this type of amenity. Pike's Peak Park, however, was felt that they, that currently has sufficient amenities for favorable play and enjoyment there. The community center could benefit from other amenities to support existing facilities, such as outdoor sports courts, possibly a community garden, an expansion of the community center historical room, and additional rooms for recreation and leisure programs. Staff also met with subcommittee members who concurred on the locations, however, both staff and subcommittee members strongly felt that Neal Snipes was best suited for a community splash pad. Recently, Todd and I, during our park revitalization project neighborhood outreach to the four parks that we're working on, residents expressed that small splash pads could be included in neighborhood pocket parks. However, staff and commission feel that they are better suited for larger community parks for the overall investment of the facility. At the November 8th, 2001, 2021 Parks and Recreation Commission meeting, staff and Recreation Commission concurred that Neal Snipes was an ideal location for a revitalization of the entire park to include but not limited to a splash pad. Staff and commission felt that completing a master plan for either community center or Neal Snipes Park, or any other park that we may consider, to include a splash pad if necessary. Commission did at their meeting pass the motion to recommend to city council to complete a master park plan for both community center and Neal Snipes for future prioritize, prioritize capital improvement projects. When we look at Neal Snipes, or any of the parks, we're looking at location, location, location. What is the best possible location is, is key. This master plan experience for Neal Snipes Park, you could see the overview of the facility. It can modernize and transform the entire aged facility for the public to enjoy. Possible amenities could include items such as a splash pad, pump track, exercise circuits, and additional parking. This will enhance the landscape character and aesthetics of the park and heighten the experience for our visitors. As we talk about the community center, we do have some of the area that's where the pool was demoed here. That master plan could be, should be conducted to take into consideration the future intent of the entire facility for the public to enjoy and include items such as a splash pad, possible outdoor sports courts to complement Riley Gymnasium, community garden, and expansion of the community center historical room, and additional rooms for recreation and leisure programs. These are all just ideas, nothing is set in, in concrete. And the benefits for investing in a community splash pad, one of the long-term benefits is the revenue that residents and non-residents bring into the community, along with the added appeal of living in that area. Attracting people means attracting revenue, those sources and patronage to the community. Patrons eat at restaurants, go to events, buy gas, go shopping, whether they are living in the community or they're visiting. Onsite shelter rentals and community events can be incorporated into facility of the choice. Also adding inclusive play opportunities for children is another important benefit. People who are looking for inclusive play areas that are built with their children in mind can appreciate design intended for their kids' physical and mental needs. Inclusive water play, we all know, may be one of the only public areas that caters to all ages and all abilities. We've looked at some turnkey purchase and installations of recirculating commercial splash pads. These are just conceptual items. We did three, three sizes. We did 2,000 square foot, 3,000 square foot, and 4,000 square foot. This represents a 2,000 square foot facility. The equipment would be purchased at 124,609 with an installation cost of 152,667 totaling 277,276. I'm going to preface these numbers right now, because I just received notice today that these numbers that we received five months ago have increased already. This is an overview of that same footprint with some sprays and different amenities. The 3,000 square foot, the equipment at 144,893, the installation at 195,702, with a total of 345,95. As you can see, some of the amenities are a little bit larger, the footprint is larger, brings some extra play areas for the children and some experiences. This is the overview of that splash pad. 4,000 square foot, equipment at 185,616, installation at 254,64, and a total of 436,080. And as you can see, that is a pretty large splash pad. Should be in a large area, of course, to bring lots of people, large events could be surrounded by that. So there's a lot of opportunities. And you can see there's some amenities there. These dots, I don't know if you know, these dots right here, those are the ones that come out of the ground and just splash up water. This one in the middle is a dump bucket. So the fiscal impact of a splash pad project, turnkey purchase and installation of a splash pad ranges from 278 to 436. I want to tell you, this does not include design development, engineering, restrooms if we need them, exterior fencing, outdoor showers, tables, benches, shade covers, landscaping, path of travel, and other amenities. The numbers that you saw previously were simply to purchase the equipment and for them to set it on the ground. Operations and maintenance can range annually from 60,000 to 180,000 annually, both are dependent on the size of the facility. So here's just kind of a summary of the estimated costs for those facilities. And you can see, we've broken out the size, the capital cost, the installation, architecture and engineering, and some amenities with the total cost. And again, this is all hypothetical, because we have no project and we have, we, we don't know what amenities the public input would, would recommend, or what staff would be recommending. So it, it would go to a public outreach campaign to consider that if a project of, of this was approved. And again, the annual operating and maintenance cost does not include, are not included in those total costs. So right now, staff is just asking city council for some direction of prioritizing a possible project, or include something like this in capital, capital improvement project budget.
Robin? Anything? Ted?
Thank you, Michelle. That was scary when you tell me that, whoops, price is going to go up. Imagine that.
Actually, do you want to know those numbers? I do have them.
Yes, please. I, I would appreciate it. I, because you're talking four months since you got these numbers originally?
Five.
Five?
So let me go back to the summary. So the 2,000 square foot for the sales is... I think he sent me the wrong ones. No, it's actually 60. No, it is not doubled.
Mike, you have to laugh.
You know what? Go ahead and ask your questions and let me find it in here.
Okay. When we did, and when you did the projection of, of where it's going to be, and you probably went through with, with Todd and yourself and some of your staff, did you include the sheriff's department?
Not at this time. We.
For, for selecting location. And, and, and let me explain why. They have, when the kids are, it's hot and they're going around like crazy, they're a great event. And Chad's got one in Eastville. Not used that much, but I can tell you from my experience in the ones that we, we dealt with, if they are not where the public can see them, or where they're accessible at all hours and easily visible, they become a area for, for, let's put it this way, the malcontent to be at an evening, if they're not easily be visible. an evening if they're not easily be visible. The larger the pad, the greater the attraction. But also the greater the attraction of the undesirables show up there. And that's what I'm asking is, when we looked at the sites, and I've been all over Neal's Snipes trying to figure it out, it would be great, but where do you put it? So it's easily accessible and easily viewable from the road and from, that's why I asked you if you included anybody from the Sheriff's Department to look at it from their point of view.
I have had conversations with law enforcement about that, and they do have concerns that it has to be visible. So being out in the open public, no recommendations to be behind the community center because it's not visible. So yes, of course, law enforcement is in favor of having it open and visible.
And one of the things, and I know you have the numbers up there, we're looking at them, and that's what I'm saying is you, when we look at this and the way I look at it, are we better off looking at two sites of the 2,000 square foot where we have more of a community? One of the things that I look at is the community buy-in. That's why we created the pocket parks, the small ones, as you well know. They're supposed to be, the community bought into that. They take them under their wing. There's their park. They, it's happened in Menifee where they had the skate park. Initially did not, they actually made it so that the community bought into where it was at so that they would stop the riffraff going in there in the evening. And that's what, that's what I'm getting at. So when you look at where do we put them in a priority? I'm for a splash park, but I'm also for the idea of when you talk to, and Chad can relate to you, on Eastvale, how big do they want it to be? How elaborate? The more elaborate, the bigger? You're going to attract people you don't want there.
And I think at this point, that's really not where we are because I think we need to go to a community outreach and have those discussions and determine what the city wants. What does City Council want? I think we're just looking to see if this is a viable project in the future and where do you want to prioritize it.
The one thing that did come up and from our research and with the commission is if you do a small location, the use is minimal, so your investment doesn't really get used. But make it a destination location. And Neal's Snipes became an opportunity there, and I believe you can create a facility there with proper lighting, extended accessibility to that location. And that's why commission felt doing a master plan there, looking at the whole facility is a positive thing that would include a splash pad and perhaps phase it in or whatever we would like to do. But they felt that that has, it's off the major street, it's off a major area. They felt that it would be visible to, from those streets, that it has accessibility. It's a larger park versus some of our other parks that are much smaller. And they felt very strongly that if you go to a smaller footprint, the use is very minimal. I do know that some of the ones that are in Eastvale, and I think Chad will chime in on that, they don't get used. They're not very frequently active. If the amenities are there, then you're going to get more residents to come. It's going to be a place to go and enjoy that day. So County Riverside has one, very large. They actually rent out and do parties there.
The one at Skinner?
Yeah. No, not at Skinner, here at their Santa Rupa Park right here. So they have a large one there. But it's also supervised, and that's one of the things that they do in their splash park. So those are some of the discussions that commission had with staff.
And I know Todd, you want to jump in. And I appreciate that, Brian, is that, my point is, are you going to make this, is this splash pad? And that's, I think, as a council, we have to realize, is this splash pad for residents? Or are we making it a destination? If you're going to make it a destination, the maintenance, the operations, and the cost are going to have to be funded, just like you said. You're going to have to have it staffed all the time. This isn't something, well, we're just going to have it here and we're not going to maintain it. And that's, or we're not going to babysit it. Because once you open it in a large one and you have that kind of element, you know, a larger number of people show up, is it, is it what we want? And that's what I'm asking is, those are the priorities, and I think other council members, that's, that's where I look at is, and so, but, and I know Chad and I have talked about the splash pad in Eastvale. You're right, it isn't used as much. But it's a small park. I think it's next to the K-9 Park or the Dog Park. Yeah, there's a couple of them. And so, and Todd, go ahead, I'm sorry.
In our outreach, when we had it, there was interest at, in the majority of the facilities we visited for the revitalization. And some of the kind of, some of the, not the backdrop, but the, if you put it in a smaller pocket park, you're bringing in people to these residential neighborhoods. How do you contend with kids running around in the streets? You know, there's, so there's things you have to contend with in a smaller facility. A majority of our parks are smaller facilities. So some of the other things, you know, with that is where we lean towards the larger parks. We also discussed, you know, some of the amenities is, do we have security? I, my last city, we had fences around them. They're, they're open for certain times of the year. Do we charge? Is there, you know, depending on how we want to go, how people want to see this perceived in the city. Neal's Snipes is obviously, you know, front and center on Hamner and Fifth Street. There's a lot of visibility. We have hotels, you know, that are in the adjacent area. How do we capitalize on it to be able to help cover some of the cost? And some of those items were the shelters. I know the county one, Brian, the Ranch of Harupa, it's tied into a campground. So there's different things and themes, but it's $5 to get in the gate at the Ranch of Harupa. And I've been there a whole bunch with my kid over the summer, my kids over the summer, and it's packed. So it's what we want to see. You're right, the bigger it is, the bigger the splash, the bigger the draw. Do we want that? You know, and that's something we've discussed in our meetings, and you're right, staffing, expenses, all that will contribute. This is just a tidbit, but the larger it is, and like the restroom facilities, a large problem with the water, it's recirculating, you're going to use more chemicals, there's going to be more urine, you know, there's things that the kids do naturally where you have to contend with. So that's something you have to consider. How often the things are flushed? There's a whole bunch of science behind it, and the bigger we go, the more it is, which if that's what we want, great. It's just, I think we want to be upfront and that's kind of our goal today, if I touched on it.
Yeah, you did, Todd. I know, because the larger, the larger it's going to cost us more. And that's what my asking is, is this going to be, I'm trying to think of the one up in San Dimas there.
There's another big one in Temecula. And there's nothing to say here where you could do a smaller footprint, but with maybe like a bigger amenity, you know, just playing with the different ideas in each one. You know, I think you want to build it big enough to where it satisfies the local people. You know, obviously, we have a, with Pike's Peak, we have a lot of amenities there. Why haven't you done Neal's Snipes? So that was in our, you know, kind of our thought process when we looked at doing this, being able to park cars. And again, including it into our master plan for that facility. We have a, the grove of established trees which provide shade, you know, so we can add shelters. We can, there's a lot of different thoughts that at Neal's Snipes where we could, we could try and utilize it. Like I said, I don't want to ramble, but that's, yeah.
And Michelle or Todd, in your master plan, I think I asked about four years ago when I was the proctor residence, they're looking for a similar walking track or lighted walking track around Neal's Snipes for that side of town? Is that in your, somewhere in your idea?
That absolutely could be part of the amenities at that whole master plan and revitalization of the park, along with, we had some people really talking about the new pump tracks for the kids to go biking rather than skate park. So that can all be incorporated into the footprint of...
And the reason I say that, because it adds the accessibility and the visibility when you put the walking tracks or lighted walking tracks around them. Again, it's ownership, the resident, and these are residents that lived on the west side of town that didn't have immediate access to up at Pike's Peak where the big walking is lighted at night. That's what I'm saying, this is what we need to incorporate.
I think, Brian, if you... Correct me, the walking track there with the physical fitness went in probably 20 years at least?
Longer than that. It was probably over maybe 30, 35 years. There's an old park horse within the park which is dilapidated at this point. And the walk, the actual walking path is not as good as it should be. And there's, that's what we heard back from the community is, I don't want to have to go to Pike's Peak, I like walking at night, couldn't you do that at Neal's Snipes? And so those conversations have taken place in the community. And the new thing about getting outside and fitness is they're doing more fitness area. So in a park now, you can actually have an outdoor fitness area so you could walk and then do some exercises in that fitness area. And maybe this park could combine all of those uses.
There used to be one there.
Well, there's a, there's a park horse, which is along the walking track. You have various things you can do. Park horses are kind of the obsolete process now. You'll see where you actually have areas where you can work out. And it's, the equipment is all for outdoor use. And so that seems to be the new trend and the more heavier use. And so what we heard is that would be great. The pump track, we heard, and at four different areas of, something like that for the kids was important and that Neal's Snipes could fit all of that into this type of use. So anyway, those were just some of the comments we had. And really, our goal is to try and get a feel for the council, what you would like to see. Obviously, everything we did here, including our costs, are based on what we received from vendors and input. There's a differential. And until you really get out and go to make it a project and go to bid, you're never going to know and get into your full design. But if it's something and if the question was do two versus one, all of those options are available to us. So, and as I think Todd and Michelle said, is a lot of the amenities that you can, are interchangeable. It's, you know, if you want a dump bucket, you can have a dump bucket. But we, that's what you would do in the design process with, once you hire your various, the company as well as your architect to help you with that planning.
Catherine?
A few things. Eastvale has two, Corona has two, plus there's one at Dos Lagos. They're only open during certain times of the year, and they are busy. Even the small ones in Eastvale are busy because it gets really hot. And they're a free outdoor space that you can go to. Folks will drive to the ones that are the coolest. The ones at Citrus, and Citrus and Corona is the biggest, it's the nicest, and that's where kids and families may want to go. It's got a nice big park and a nice big grassy area. So I want, I disagree on this idea that a bigger park attracts undesirables. That hasn't, there's going to be undesirables, you know, that's, this is life, right? But, you know, going, I spend a lot of time at parks, and majority of the time, it's families out there and kids out there who just want to enjoy, you know, being at their recreation spaces. I would just say, you know, from my perspective, whatever we do, I would like to see that it's slightly different than what is in Corona and Eastvale because you could just go right now to Corona or Eastvale to a splash park. So whatever features, it doesn't have to be the biggest one around necessarily, but like none of those have a little slide. And those are a huge hit when I've gone to them because it's like a water slide and kids love it. So just something that would make it, you know, special or unique to our area in lieu of people just going to the ones that we already have. And I agree strongly with the commission's recommendation that we need a master plan. You know, as I thought about this, I was really excited that this recommendation came forward. I hear this a lot from our residents, they want a splash pad. But just popping a splash pad, you know, at the community center or at Neal's Snipes without thinking of what we want that park to look like, investing that kind of money, I think we should have a plan for what is that going to look like? Are we going to have a skate park? You know, what are we going to have for our young adults? Right now, same thing, you have to go to Eastvale or Corona. And there's all ages that use that. My little four-year-old is on his Razor scooter with the big skateboarding kids, and they're actually all very nice, the little kids out there. You know, and I know you mentioned some other ideas, but, and I think, you know, our community feedback, what our residents are seeing is really important in this process. So I support the splash pad, want to get community feedback, but I really think that we do need that master plan. Doesn't mean we're going to do all those parts, but at least we're, it's making sense where we're putting it and moving forward from there.
Greg?
Good report, Todd, Michelle. Appreciate the information. And I would certainly support a master plan workshop with that. To me, it's, you know, like Ted brought up, in one sense, I kind of like the small little pocket ones, but I think that use would be limited and probably too many residential complaints about traffic and everything else that goes with it. Just looking at the different threes, whether it's 2,000, 3,000, 4,000, the order of magnitude goes down per square foot as you go larger. But as far as location, let's just say between community center and Neal's Snipes Park, existing infrastructure, that, which of those areas, what are going to be the cost impacts of electrical upgrades, drainage, water, sewer? Those are all going to be fixed costs, which you need to add to these numbers. And to me, that's going to be a pretty stable cost whether you build 2,000, 3,000, or 4,000.
Hundred percent.
Right.
And unfortunately, both those facilities are older. I mean, even, you know...
They're not adequate.
Yeah.
Right.
So it's, yeah, so the run, how you get to it, the access, yeah.
Yeah, so your upgrades may be much greater, so...
And of course, whatever we do, we're not going to know that until we get into the engineering and design of that. And just to point out, at community center, we just eliminated a bunch of water and power in the back.
Yeah, and Neal's Snipes, you don't have structures. So I mean, you're going through, you know, parking lot, so we're looking at the street. I obviously don't know the infrastructure of Fifth Street below, but I would imagine sewer and, we obviously have water. But that's something we will look at. Probably, I would assume you would upgrade during, you know, part of a master plan if we have a 30-some odd year, year old sewer.
So to me, it's like, I'm not going to get hung up on the square footage of the splash pad to have a number of...
Cost.
Yeah. What's the infrastructure going to cost on this to support whatever footage? Water lines are going to be the same, whether it's 2,000 or 4,000, and sewer and drainage and all that good stuff.
Agreed.
You know, as I said earlier to Brian, the whole gang, you know? All the good stuff. And I think that number's going to change these numbers dramatically.
One of the things they looked at is that the commission, whether a splash pad was going to, they feel that Neal's Snipes needs some sort of revitalization and update. And if we were to do that in talking with Todd, we would be recommending infrastructure development anyway because we do have some irrigation problems there and things like that that need to be done and how we, and amount of water we have. So all of those things, we would probably be coming back and talking about it anyway. But they were saying, if we're going to look at this, maybe look at it very holistically and what you would do. Again, not knowing what all those costs are, is something we'd have to do as part of the process and plan.
You know, I'm sure Chad's department could put together an order of magnitude on water and sewer on that. At least for a workshop.
I was thinking Public Works could just throw that in, or water. I mean, it's a thought.
I just want to offer, I've dealt with splash pads my time at Fullerton. We had three different versions, a small, medium, and large. They all had their issues. Dealt with the ones with J C S D. They have their problems, they're pretty small, and people complain about that. No matter what you do, you're going to be second guessed because it's, someone always thought you should do something different. And I think it's just more of a desire, do you want to serve the community as a whole? Do you want to spread them out? Because maybe you have some underserved areas where they could benefit from that. We had one in Fullerton that was in an underserved area where folks didn't have pools and stuff, and it was heavily used, but very small, heavily used. But they did complain, they wished they had more features, but it was very... wished they had more features. But it was very heavily used, even though it was small. Because they don't have those resources where they live. Other areas, we had large ones, where they had fencing, tons of features, security cameras. It just depends on where, it's right next to a roadway. It just depends on what you're trying to do in the area that you're at, of what you want to put in. But definitely, I think, you know, the number one thing you're always getting played on is they didn't like the features. They don't, they want more. They want it more interactive. But there's liabilities and issues when you get bigger. You know, there's certainly the issue that I've experienced in the past is, is the maintenance. The more you build, the more you have to maintain. You have to have a staff that understands how it was constructed, how do they repair it. It's not something where you want to call the vendor and pay that money for them to come out and do X, Y, and Z. So what you build, what needs to be functional, it needs to be easily repaired, it needs to be easy access to parts to replace things. They have to be responsible. In the case that all these pads, per California law, have to be recycling. So now you're dealing with chemicals, ozone, chlorine, you're, you're having to test them every day that they're there. So staff has to be responsible for documentation. So people have done it, and these can be done. And you're going to be second guessed. I think you're in the right approach of getting the community involved, trying to figure out where it is. That's your biggest issue. Where would you place it? How would you do it? Or would you want to spread it out and do a couple? You know, obviously, two gives you a better chance to hit more people. But if you put it in a pretty nice physical facility, that's, you know, got a lot of amenities, people are going to hear about it. Whether it's the locals or it's people from out of town, they just hear about the fun place to be. They're going to be there. Then you got to decide, is staff going to be there permanently on place? Is it just going to be something where they're watching by video? You're going to have quote unquote a lifeguard that's there just to keep people from climbing onto pertinences? Or, because again, kids run and play. And that, you have the surfaces that accommodate for that. But people are going to get hurt. Who do they call when something happens? Can emergency services get there quickly and easily? Because you have the path of travel to quickly get to those folks. So there's a ton of stuff to think about. But I think it's a very positive thing to have in a community. You can bring people together. And for all the reasons that they talked about, it's just, in the end, don't think that you have to get it perfect, because you won't. It, it's, but if you have the right people in mind and the right ideas of why you want to do it, you'll put something together that in the end you'll be very proud of. With the water and sewer included.
Yeah.
So just a couple of things to kind of go off of what Chad just said. I'm in favor of Neil Snipes. I think it will serve the community, and we're serving our guests. Again, we're quote unquote, want to make this a destination town. And having the one hotel with two more potential right there, I just think it makes sense, especially since they probably go play soccer all day. Mom and dad want to come home and maybe relax a little bit at the hotel. The kids can run around at the splash pad while they're relaxing or whatever. So I think that's really important. The other thing, kind of to speak to what Catherine stated, I had given Brian some information. There are splash pads that could be Norco wise, for lack of a better term, where the, the features are Western or horsey in nature. And I think, for me, that's critically important to keep with this overall theme of Horstown USA, that our splash pad should look like it's unique to Horstown USA. And that that would be critical as well. So obviously, I'm in favor. I've been asking about this for a long time. And I'm glad to see it being moved forward. The only other kind of sticking point for me is, in reading the staff report, when there's questions about, you know, mosquitoes, water recycling, some of that stuff, I feel like those could have been answered in the, whatever presentation was made to Parks and Rec, because I don't know what the presentation was. But I felt like some of those questions that were in the staff report, if the presentation was thought through on, on whatever was given to Parks and Rec, that a lot of those questions wouldn't have necessarily shown up. But again, I didn't listen to Parks and Rec. I don't even know if it's recorded or not. But with the amount of time, going back five or six months on getting quotes and some of those things, some of that stuff should automatically be, oh, yeah, we're going to get questions about X, Y, and Z. And it should have been addressed in the presentation. So that's all I have.
For me, I have even more questions. When we talk about, to Robin's point, the hotel, I get that. That's, that's a good point in terms of people, you know, after their soccer games. But there are plans elsewhere that need to be looked at. We're not looking at the big picture. There's a whole nother gigantic project that each council person needs to investigate now. So will they come to this if that other project happens? Economic development, you got Bob's Big Boy, Starbucks Center, the burrito place. Who's, who, exactly where are they going to go? We've made no stipulation whatsoever for the economic development on that corridor. We're building hotels. We maybe have two more restaurants coming in with another hotel project. Did they submit Alma? Have they submitted those seven plans yet? But it looks like they're going to. So, and maybe even a third, maybe a third restaurant there if they, so in some ways, we'd be putting it in the middle of nowhere. And I'm concerned about that. Bike course, or if you recall, that used to be a motorcycle course years ago. And then it was a bicycle, I can't remember what they're called, but it was a course for bikes. What's the status of the old sewage treatment center? If that, will that become ours once it's cleaned up?
You know, I don't, maybe you have a better update.
Well, the, we're still working with the feds and the state regarding that cleanup. The intent is that when cleanup, we do have our agreement together to get that site cleaned up. And it's cleaned up, is the intent is that property would be dedicated to the city.
And so for me, that would be a great place for a bike course, possibly. And then the other thing in terms of Neil Snipes, that is, I don't know if you remember this, Brian, we used to call that our quiet park. The, we, that's the one where you have a lot of people, seniors, that walk that park. And they like that it's quiet. That's where you had your quieter parties. As opposed to Pike's Peak, which was more of your youth centralized kind of park with the big, that's why we put in the gigantic play structure. That's why you have the big open field that also serves as your parking lot. But that was the purpose. And so the other thing is, is we are now making the determination, after years of talking about making a deal, that maybe Neil Snipes Park would become more of an economic driver. So before we start putting $2 million, whatever it's going to cost, are we going to jettison the idea that we will no longer think about making the front of it as a economic driver? Because the reality is, when that bridge opens, Eastville is going to be ready. We are not. And so anything we build at this point, we, we talk that it's going to be a destination point. But then what? Most of the splash pads that I know of are, they're actually gated. There are some of them, like there's one not in San Dimas, but Ranch Cookamanga or Ontario, that's in the middle of a, a big county park. It's gigantic. It's packed. But it's closed a certain amount of the time. And people go there to picnic and to do things like that. How, how far are we willing to go in terms of this? What are we going to develop that is an ancillary to that? The community center, we, I mean, what are we really going to do with the community center? For real? I mean, Robin, I know, we've all been talking about a splash pad, but I've been talking about a master plan over there for 10 years. Clark Field, it's woefully inadequate, it's woefully small. And I'm not blaming anybody on staff. The reality is, one of the things that I wish residents understood is, 10 years ago, we didn't have a penny. There was nothing. So I'm not faulting anybody. But I think that we talk about the master plan. I think that we need to really think about the Hamner Avenue corridor. And what is it when those kids descend? I really like Robin's point. I hadn't thought of it. They are going to go to that hotel. And hopefully, they'll go to that splash pad. But I also know that when we've done homeless counts at night and early in the morning, they're sleeping on the benches. So at a certain point, I also know that residents that live there, they, there's areas that they don't walk on the west north side of that park. Because all those trees along there, that's where you have some encampment issues. The other thing is, is are we willing, as a council, if we're going to totally pre-plan Neil Snipes, one, we're going to throw out the idea that we might negotiate the top of the hill? I mean, one of the things we've talked about is it's a bargaining chip. Remember, the top of that hill is privately owned. And we've talked about, we've actually had, we've actually tried to work deals with developers whereby we're swapping land. If we decide we're going to make it another family park in a city of about 15 of them, remember Pike's Peak is only two miles away. If it may, two, maybe 2.4 miles away.
From who?
From.
Depends where you live in the city, though.
No, 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 no. From Neil Snipes.
Right. But Pike's Peak is on, is not a close park for residents who live on my side of town.
And I understand.
It's very far park. Corona parks are closer.
And I understand. And on that side where you live, you've got Wainmaken, you've got, there's different parks that were designed. And I'm not saying we don't do this. I'm just saying, we really have to think about it. Because you have a whole bunch of people, seniors, that walk Neil Snipes. They love that park because it's quiet. That's the quiet park. We have a lot of parks with play structures and lots of amenities. And I'm, all I'm, and I'm not against it, if that's where you guys decide you want to go. But I think, when we talk economic development, we're full of it. We're full of it. You have 80,000 kids going into a gymnasium. And they can't, and kitty corner, it's too dangerous and then cross the street. What economic development? And when I was a kid, I used to walk to the park. And there were, there were five stores walking to my house. We'd stop at every one of them, buy crap. There's nothing like that. So we have to think how we're going to place these things, in my opinion.
One of the things that came up at the last council meeting was to take a look at these things in prioritization.
Right.
So, and what you're thinking about at community centers, really master planning that. What is the end in mind there? Neil Snipes, and from what we've heard from residents is that they would like to see a refresh there.
Yeah, I'm all for it.
Now, taking into that into consideration, even in our strategic planning process we just had, one of the big topics was community outreach. Let's communicate. Let's go out and find, I was, we did our, we did the four little small parks recently. And I was so pleasantly surprised at the turnout and the participation from residents and families who showed up with their kids to participate. And that was really good, because we had kids giving us ideas and suggestions. So I think that process works, because you're hearing from your community of what they think we should be doing in the next 20 years.
Well, that was how we did Pike's Peak.
Sure. And, and I think doing, that type of process, do some sort of a charrette or something where you have that ability, I think is a positive thing, especially when you look at two of our largest parks, Neil Snipes Community Center. I think those are worthy of that outreach and discussion, survey and all of that in the future. Because both those facilities are, lack of a better word, worn and old. And how do we preserve that historical part, but yet make that a very viable part for use? As you said, the gym is very heavily used. But how do we create other activities that meet the community's needs? And our nonprofits, and all those people who have used the community center for years. But yet Neil Snipes, how do we make it more productive? And we, we heard over and over, in just the four small parks, and a lot of this is related to COVID, people are out going to the park, they're doing more exercise. And we heard over and over, Todd and Michelle can tell you, we want to see more things that allow us to walk and exercise. And by the way, we had a variety of age groups, from seniors to very young at those, those meetings. And they all were in that consensus of doing that type of thing. Provide us amenities that do that. A lot of them even mentioned, well, Pike's Peak has this, but we don't have that. We want this. And so how do we do that? And that's, that's community planning, which we have to engage the community to do. So I think what we're bringing here tonight allows us to start that process.
I think we're on the same page. Well, I, for me, I just, we just need to look at the really big picture. Ted?
Kevin, real quick, and, and because you know this better than I do. When you guys look at Neil Snipes, are those restrictions still on there, Kevin?
They are.
So, and the majority of residents don't realize the restrictions with Neil Snipes. Is that, you know, whatever we trade off, that's at seven acres, is that the Navy gave it to us as part of a deal, that if you take, you have to replace if whatever you don't, if it goes commercial on any part of it. Because the corner of Fifth and Hamner is a very lucrative commercial spot. But if you take, you take it away, you have to find another place and location for it, correct? And that's part of the park. But it's all under the, down under the restrictions of the deed that when they granted it. I just want, so that the residents and people and their staff don't know, there are restrictions on that land. So we have to be aware of that.
A question on that, John. But with that, could something be done like what has been done with Silver Lakes? There are certain provisions that are allowed for parks, for concessions, or activities, or things that, that cities are allowed to allow for on, on open space like that.
Theoretically, although the question you're asking, the question of different kinds of entities, where we ended up with the restrictions on Silver Lakes, because a federal judge said, yeah, you can do this. The, the restrictions on Snipes are, we have to convince the Navy that it's okay. But so theoretically, yes. I think even, I mean, comparing the, the Silver Lakes and that, the one thing that the Silver Lakes judge did not want to have happen is for it to turn into a purely kind of retail.
Walmart.
Right. Well, I think of like Irvine Regional Park. You go there, they have a snack, you know, you can get food, you can rent the little bikes to ride around. I mean, there's things, but it's still, those are allowed uses because they're park related.
Those things would be fine now in Snipes.
Or you're renting out your building to somebody to do concessions.
And some of these, you, they have bike rentals and all kinds of things for those type of amenities.
Because, yeah, it's another company that does it. But it's, it's, it's allowed because it's related to the park's purpose. Yeah.
Did we already open public comments? Let's open public comments.
We have no public comments.
Closing public comments. So does council have a direction they want to go? Is there...
Yeah, I'm a little curious. So, I mean, I certainly support a splash pad wherever you put it. Your comments, I think, are, to me, are well taken about, we need the attraction going from Silver Lakes to turn left to come into Norco. So we, we need economic drivers if we want to make this a larger splash pad and do improvements to the park and all of that. So in trying to tie that into economic development. But unless I'm in question, so I'm not trying to jack you up on this, Kevin, because maybe I missed the memo, but you asked Alma about a smittle on plans for restaurants and hotels. Do we all know about this?
No.
Okay.
Actually, I sent each of you a email that you didn't have to respond to, to make sure you were aware of it. It's something brand new that's just happened. I sent all four council people, it's the one where John responded and said, you can't comment on it. Because we don't know, it's just one of those deals that right now is in the pre-planning. They're getting ready to submit seven plans. And it's a free kind of, they will overlook it and decide. In other words, they'll give comments, correct Alma? And it'll go to the different departments. And it's sort of a free assessment of, to sort of see what changes need to be made, what they're in compliance with, different things like that, correct? Okay, it's not a formal smittle. It's just a, it's just a pre-submittal. And that we've been meeting with those developers.
Is this a process?
I think what he's referring to is the PRB process, where a theoretical project can just ask us.
Yeah, it's just a project review.
That's it.
Where we give informal information about, you need to look at this, you need to look at that, you need to talk to fire. So that they can decide whether or not they want to even come forward with a project. It's just our, it's what we call our PRB process.
Right. I'm, I'm well aware what those are. You know, I keep saying this over the years, Holiday Inn, okay, no surprises. And once again, surprise. That's what I got to say.
But I support you on economic development.
Yeah, I don't think it's, I don't think it's, I mean, again, I sent out an email. It was, it's all pre-stuff. I wanted to make sure that it didn't get out ahead of council. But again, it's just something that's early on. So.
My two cents.
I guess I'll chime in after Greg. Ever since I've been on council, there's been rumors about Neil Snipes Park being cut in half, or not being used as parkland. And again, that kind of stuff, it is incredibly frustrating to me. Because I don't think there's ever been formal discussion. There's rumors of this, rumors of that. At the end of the day, I'm not going to...
At the end of the day, I'm not going to make my decision based on rumors or hearsay or a connection somebody might have or this or that. I mean, we say the corner of Fifth and Hamner is an economic, you know, gold mine. I drive past an empty corner, it's supposed to have a hotel on it almost every day. So this, I get the big picture idea, um, but if this is something we want, I don't want to sit and wait on something we want to serve our residents in hopes that a developer might come along. The whole time I've been on council, it's to me, more empty promises from developers and lies than fruitful action. That's just my two cents.
I don't believe there's been any discussions as long as you've been on council, but there were two very definite discussions prior to your council. And I know that, and I know that while you were on council, there were discussions with, uh, looking at what we could do at that particular base. Nothing's been hidden from you. And that's just a fact.
That's fine, I disagree.
Well, you're just factually incorrect. So what do we want to do?
Do we agree that we would like a master plan or should we move forward on the splash pad? Um, but it would, would you all nod your, would, or tell us your preference? Cause that seems like where, where the conversation is for Neil Snipes. I agree that the splash pad would be best served at Neil Snipes. We have two things, one's not related to the splash pad, but it's the recommendation for the master, um, plan for the community center, which we could bring up at the end of the council meeting, but at hand, if we wanted to try to get community input, come up with a plan and then move forward with the splash pad, or if we just want to move forward with the splash pad without doing that. I vote for doing some community outreach. I just, again, I wouldn't want it to, in a year from now, we still haven't made any progress, that we have some kind of timeline for, here's the ideas from our residents, here's where we want to go, and then we can take action, tweak it as needed, but that this moves forward and it doesn't just kind of go back to the end of the list.
Just, just to add that, we could do, start a community outreach discussion, then come back with, uh, based on that with some cost of what it would take to do a master plan if that's council's direction.
John, correct me if I'm wrong, it, this is just priority on this is for a splash pad, correct? And is what we're, well, because what was advertised, I mean, I, I agree with Catherine, we gotta get things going here. It, you gotta read what we're doing.
I mean, obviously the, uh, agenda, what I'm looking is the literal wording of the agenda item.
So, and here's my thought, and, and I agree with Kevin and I agree with Catherine. We need master plans. We need master plan for the community center and we need master plan for Neil Snipes Park if we're going to proceed. And that's what I'm getting at is I agree is that, but why can't we have both of them start working on it now? Because like Kevin, once that Ham, once the bridge opens in 2023, we're too late. It's gotta be now. That bridge will be an economic driver. And I, whatever we're going to do, it's going to be, bring people in town. What I'm getting at here is can we make them, can I, can we, uh, develop a master plan based upon this workshop direction for a master plan for both?
Well, yeah, I mean, I, I, I guess if, does the.
If the public outreach, everything going on?
Does the splash pad agenda item encompass that? Yeah, I think part of the discussion is that, okay, you, you're gonna, you believe that Snipes is the place to put it, uh, that necessitates doing a master plan at least for Snipes and, or, and that would go on at the same time.
But, and, but the, but the, the, the agenda item also had, it included the community center. So, so we could do, in that kind of a motion, we could do both.
Yeah.
So that we can develop these master plan, get this thing going, because we've all been talking about nothing being done. And so, and if Catherine, you know, I'm just going to say, I'm going to recommend that we develop these master plans for Neil Snipes for future development, along with the community center for future development, so we can get this resolved.
Would you include across the street, Clark Field, that area or just sit with, uh, community center first?
The only thing, well, let's, let's, that should be, come out of EDAC. I'm sorry, that thing that across Clark, that, but it's never going to happen and, and I'm sorry. I look at five years of wasted time on that. It should have been done. But I will agree with you, we're going to hodgepodge that other corner across where Clark is and it's going to be nothing that we really want in a master plan if we don't take. But I, I'm one step, small step. I think that needs to come as, from the economic development, a driver there that we start. It should come from them, but it probably won't, but I'm looking at what's on the agenda and the agenda is specifically listed either the community center and, uh, Neil Snipes. So if we want to go with that, Kevin, I'd be more than happy to agendize that later, that we should do that, but let's go with what's on the agenda so we keep it clean. That's my idea. So those two, and I would recommend that we look at master plan for community outreach and tell what we're going to do with the community center and what we're going to do with Neil Snipes. And then if you want to lay later agendize tonight, the other one, I would go for that.
Totally fine. Um, so is that a motion?
Yeah, it's a motion.
I'll second it.
Under discussion.
Yep.
And, and I agree with what, where you're going with this, but also if there's the potential for future development, then we should also look at that whoever that developer or developments are, that they will contribute to the public enhancement of that. So, and I think if you have a master plan, that you can present that to them to go, um.
Help fund this.
Yeah. Here's what you're going to help, uh, on a public enhancement. And then my last question, not somewhat related, and you can answer this later for us tonight, is, um, uh, the east side of Hamner there from like Clark Field to Sixth Street, um, could that zoning be changed to a specific plan?
I can't think.
And we can talk about it later, it's not on this agenda, but.
I know, but I think the answer to the question is that any zoning can be changed.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Just, just for clarification for staff, um, and what I'm hearing is a motion for to look at what it would take to bring back a master plan, uh, to include community outreach or, or you wanted us to do community outreach and then come back because a master plan costs money and that needs to have be, so it needs to be identified as a project for us to do it, which we can bring that back, but I, I think staff would bring that back to you to.
Can you do, you can do the, can the outreach be done and then bring it back to us to approve?
However you want to do it.
I think we want both, yes?
Typically in a master plan, it will also include also community outreach when you're doing the master plan because it needs to be part of that process of design and development that you do with the community. We could do an outreach just to get feedback that people are interested in this.
Yes.
And then include that would be also when we bring that back, info back, say, hey, here is also the cost of doing a master plan and what cost would working drawings be? Because you probably, the whole thing is a phase in approach anyway when you get to it. So, but it's definitely something, I just want to be clear on what the staff direction is because I, one of the things I think we would do is a survey and we would do some sort of outreach, um, and we had success going into the park and doing it. So I think those things are very viable for the community and getting a chance to, uh, have their two cents. And, and community center has a lot of different users, so we would engage all of those people in that process.
Closed session item.
Yeah, well, you need to, you need to adjourn.
Adjourn this meeting, please.
No, 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 but I, what I wanted to know is do we have, are we adding something?
What?
Or is it already on that?
Yeah, when we, when we, when you open the fir-, no, it's not. So when the meeting opens, then I will ask that you add something to the closed session.
All right. Meeting is now adjourned.